Good evening. I'm Beth McCoy, the superintendent. And since we don't have a chair at this moment in time, I'm going to call this meeting of the Dover School Committee to order. Today is Tuesday, June 3, 2025, and we are meeting in the Dover Sherburne Middle School Library. The time is now 5:30. Before we begin, I'd like to welcome a new member of our school committee, Kevin Beelke. Kevin is unfortunately unable to join us tonight, but he will be joining us next week when we meet as a joint committee with the other two teams. So we'll welcome Kevin, and we'll make sure that he is feeling up to speed and can ask all of the questions about Circuit Breaker and all of the wonderful things that you've all learned over the years as we move forward. So welcome, Kevin.
Hi, I'm so sorry.
No, you're great. Well, while it's getting organized, I'll ask if there are any community comments. We have provided a virtual link for those who would wish to make a comment for whom it's not possible, preferred to attended person. Are there any community comments this evening? Okay. Then I will keep moving here. Given that it is the first meeting of a new team, I'd like to call or request a motion to nominate a chair for the Dover School Committee. Is there a motion to nominate some or nomination? Who would like to nominate someone for chair?
I will nominate Golly for chair.
Is there anybody else we'd like to nominate aside from Golly? Is there a second?
Kate Cook, second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
She's going to be fabulous, too.
She's going to be great.
Take a vote. We need three votes, all in favor of Golly. Golly, what do you think? You've got to vote because you're number three. All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
And I can call a motion for a secretary.
Sure. I would like to make a ask for a motion to move a nomination for... Can I nominate myself?
Sure.
I would like to nominate Jessie Hall for a position for Secretary of Dover School Committee for this upcoming academic year.
Kate Cook, second. Discussion?
Any discussion? All right. Thank you, Jessie.
All in favor? Okay. Pass this, three votes. Got a four. So congratulations to Golly, congratulations to Jessie.
Thank you.
And Golly, the meeting is officially yours to welcome our PTO representation.
Thank you very much. And sorry I was late. And I would like to ask Asima, an upcoming president of PTO, for an update. Thank you.
Sorry, do I stand? Do I sit?
Whatever.
So my name's Asima. I'll be currently myself and Lauren. We are the VPs for the 2024-2025 year and will be president for 2025-2026. So this is just a quick year in review, and we will give you a preview for the next year. So this year, we had 31 Curriculum Enrichment Program between pre-K to fifth. Our spending was around 29K on the classroom curriculum. We supported our educators with $10,000 in funds, about $4,000 in teacher grants, and $3,000 in hospitality. We had a very successful fundraising year, raising $50,594 in check writing, the check writing campaign. So here are some of our PTO events. We did popsicles in the park. We did the Welcome Back picnic, International Culture Night, which was a success, Spelling Bee, Books from the Heart. We had two Parent Night Out slash fundraising events. One was the Bar Class, which we had feedback on that. And then we had Overlook Farm Night, which was great. We had, this year, we did something different. We did Game Night versus like Bingo. And Lauren led that one. And we had like really, really good feedback. Everybody loved it. They want to see more of that, which was great to start something new. We had Square One Art. We had STEM Day. We had, well, we'll be having the fifth grade celebrations. So for the family promis supply of drugs, we did like a, I can't remember, like the underwear.
Yeah, it was a new. It was a new company.
Yeah. So that, we did, continued on with the Chicken and Carrot Holiday Park project and of course, our wonderful enrichment program. And these are just a list of all the enrichment programs from pre-K to fifth. So as you can tell, every class has at least three. And you know, pre-K had six, or three. There's a couple of four and five. So it's a lot, you know? We do a lot, which is great. We always get great feedback from the teachers. We get great feedback from the programs themselves and how they... We've actually had two separate occasions where the program had come back and said, you know, we go to multiple schools, and we've gone to like really like private schools and then, you know, really like, like just public schools. And they're like, chickering kids were so well behaved, so appreciative, and so like engaged, which is really nice, you know? So it was just like, it was great to hear that. So you know, we have, for next year, we have a lot of these... We have a couple of new ones in here, and we're going to continue on with this. So this is our financial recap. So at the beginning of the year, we had a budget of income of 65K and then expenses of 102, with a net operating income of negative 37. And those are the individual things that we're budgeting. And then for actuals, we came in more at 75. And our expenses were a lot less, which is great, 79,435, with a net operation income of negative eight. And as you can tell, the differences, you know, we had some going down, some going up, but it kind of balanced out. So we tried to try to keep the budget, our expenses, within like 80, you know? So that's like our goal, just because that's kind of what our cash reserve is. So we always want to have that, let's just say, one year, we have nothing coming in. We can still run the PTO as is for at least one year. And then, Lauren, continue.
Good to have you all. Nice to meet you all. So we can, and we'll go ahead to next year. So this is the board that we'll be voting on. Six, so some of us are coming back again. We just love it and we stay, but they're, you know, sort of exciting to see some new needs. So like, you know, Myra's new, and you know, NOC's going to do two positions. So you know, people who volunteered in the PTO, a lot of them are staying, but it's always good, you know? Fresh places, fresh folks. So, just the board. Okay, so a lot of the events, like we've done them, tried and true, and they work, right? So the Popsicles in the Park is great for new families, especially like people who are new to the town, not just new to the school. They can come. Generally, we do it twice, like on a Wednesday night and then begin on the weekend with the rain dates. We really try to make sure that we start off on the right foot. That's generally our first thing that we do in the PTO. And then, of course, the Welcome Back picnic as well, at the beginning of the New Year's, is a school year, I should say, is another big hit. We will always, I'm sure, do the International Cultural Night. Parents' Night Out was different this year when we did like the Lookout Farm. I think the year before, we had done the, for the name of the place. Yeah, thank you, thank you. But the Lookout was like a huge hit. So the, and partnering with them, I think, was really nice. They kind of made some accommodations. So we'll try that again. We went when it was actually trivia night as well. So we might be able to like take a spin on that for game night for parents or something like that. So there's some opportunities there. Of course, Spelling Bee. The game night that we had this year was a huge hit. Like, we've gotten tons of feedback on it. I think that the cap was packed. It was so busy. That was the first time we had partnered with Pine Hill. So that was kind of nice. We've been looking for opportunities to like bring these two communities together. So they were a part of that. I think we'd love to do that again. Because we have the spring auction, we might just play around with when to do that. So we'll sort of see when that fits in the schedule for us. Bike safety is something that we didn't do this year. So we'll see if we want to do it next year. We didn't have a lot, a ton of participation years prior, so we might sort of do it every other year. But we do like that event because it, you know, it gives the kids safety. They're out, you know, riding their bikes. So it is nice to kind of keep that up. The last one is, so STEAM Day. So with Dave Gaffney, he's done a sort of a tremendous job of incorporating, you know, STEAM into their everyday curriculum. So we said, what do we want to keep doing, right? What do we want to do with this particular event? So I think where we've landed is in years past, we've done a science fair type event. We might kind of try to go back to that, right? Low pressure, but maybe similar to International Night, where we sort of go around and have everybody like introduce something that they're excited about. So we'll explore. That might be something that, kind of a new event that we need to plan out a little bit. So that's what we have planned for next year. Want some more on the expenses? So projected gross income, 104. And then the expenses, 116. I am told from our wonderful treasurer that that's normal, that variance is normal. So that's not to be, you know, surprised at the differential. And again, this is all just supporting all of the programming that we just talked about. You know, this year will be a spring, the spring auction year. So that will be the program that's going to bring in a lot of the funds to support the activities. So just a couple of pie charts, a projected income. Again, the auction is where we're going to make the bulk of our money, just like alternating, check writing, spring auction. And then we have some other fundraising activities that we'll sprinkle in to sort of help augment. The rest, I think, are on the smaller side. But like Books from the Heart is another one that does bring in some flow. And then, next one. And then where are we spending that money that we're going to bring in? So the Curriculum Enrichment is a huge piece of what we do. Like Asima said, the kids love it. They have so much fun. We try to really balance out the programs. And we're looking at the standards that are coming in and trying to tailor activities that are going to fit with their learning and line it up so that it aligns with what they're doing. So that for sure takes the bulk of our expenses. And then the other one is just all the, all the things that we're trying to do for the teachers and supporting them and things like that. So those are sort of the big two heavy hitters on expenses. So thank you. Thank you for letting us be here. Any questions?
No, but thank you so much for all you do for this.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
It's an incredible amount of work that goes into it. And you know, when I get to my updates, I'm going to thank all our volunteers, but that includes the PTO. The enrichment that you provide our kids takes, like you said, the standards and brings them to life and adds, you know, something that other schools aren't able to. And the support that you give to teachers through grants. And then the community building activities that you provide for families. And then making that bridge to Pine Hill, I think, is really special. So thank you.
You can definitely do a big thing about trying to bring them together so that, you know, I know the Pine Hill and Chickering get together in middle school, but it's like, you know, let's start early and kind of just, you know, do some activities where they're taking each other apart from sports, you know?
And the bike safety might be like another good activity to like merge together. So we have some ideas of how to keep that going.
Great. That's great. Thank you, Beth.
Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Now, next on our agenda is superintendent's comment.
Superintendent McCoy, would you please give us your comments?
Sure. So I'll be brief because we'll be together as a joint group next week. I just want to thank everybody at this time of year. Our students have worked really hard all year. And based on the data that we're seeing, especially through their DIBELS, their literacy scores, they've learned a lot this year, which means that they've worked hard, our teachers have worked hard. And we have a lot to celebrate. I'd like to thank our educators for the blood, sweat, and tears that they put into the classroom every day. It's not an easy job. To our families for all of the support. And of course, our volunteers who, you know, show up and are willing to roll up their sleeves and help all the time. And I just want to highlight some of the end of year events. So if you're feeling like the world is rushing past you, it is. This week, we have our data team. So each grade level data team is looking at their end of year data and thinking about what support students might need over the summer. And then right when we start in September, getting those interventions up and running. Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Reiman. I think Thursday's Field Day?
Thursday's Field Day.
87 degrees. Bring your wife. Friday's Flag Day. And then skipping ahead to next week, Friday, the 13th, we have the Grade Five Celebration, getting ready to move them on to the middle school. Monday, the 16th, we have Step Up Day. So teachers, kids will get to meet the teachers who are going to be in their next grade level. And then June 17th, we have an assembly before we put all of our students on the bus and send them off for the summer. So so much to do in the next two weeks, Dr. Reiman. We'll get through it. But I'm happy to take questions or comments.
That's wonderful.
Thank you so much, Beth.
You're welcome.
I really appreciate it. Next on our agenda is financial reports.
So you have your monthly warrant report, which is just your sample report, nice and easy. You also have your status of appropriations. We're now, as of May 31st, there has not been a lot of changes. I think we've been pretty consistent from month to month. So that's nice. Most of the report is not in bold, which means that what we've reported over the months have maintained the same. I just tweaked that we currently have 21 out of district placements, and that's two over budget. I think my number was a little off last month, and I wanted to make sure we corrected that. And as you know, we are seeing a substantially large negative variance in our out of district. But we have the Circuit Breaker to help relieve that financial deficit. So even with that, we're still looking to turn back to the town at probably about $300,000. And we, you know, sometimes get trued up a little bit with additional transportation for Circuit Breaker. So that number could vary a little bit, but at least 300,000. I've reported that to the town, and they're, they're working that into their, their year end numbers. Any questions on 25? Just hopping over to 26. As you know, at the last meeting, all of our budgets were approved. We have the Chickering, the final sort of phase of Chickering flooring happening this summer. And we did provide where we stand right now with enrollment projections. I want to just highlight that we are moving the sections around. There is a switch with that kindergarten class, actually, turned out to be much larger than we had anticipated when you looked at the census. Quite a bit larger than we anticipated when you looked at the census. But we knew we had enough staff that we had some flexibility to switch grades if we needed to. And so we did. So there was a movement from one grade to kindergarten. But if you're looking at right now, we still have all the grades within the project or within your class policy guidelines of 17 to 22. We anticipate, as it happens every summer, there still will be some growth. I think the one grade that is a little lower than what our projection said right now was second grade, but that's where they, we had a large increase in that over the last two years. So we'll see if that pans out. It doesn't pan out. But I think, needless to say, we've got the staff that we need to accommodate still additional students enrolling over the summer. And so we'll obviously report those numbers back to you in September.
All right. Beth, can I talk about pre-K?
Yes. And then it's not shown on here, but if you remember in your budget, we have for the last several years had two pre-K classes. But the numbers are such so that what drives that are those pre-K students who are on IEPs, because we have the integrated preschool, right? The numbers don't, right, that we know right now and what we see coming in don't substantiate having two pre-Ks. So we are reducing one pre-K. The pre-K that we're reducing, though, doesn't impact your budget because it's run out of the pre-K revolving funds. So that is happening there. And there was some shifting of staff. But that is set up now that there is one pre-K in Dover and one pre-K in Sherburne. It still gives us flexibility that we can jump into each other's programs should something arise. But that is where we really need to be because it's important to have, we don't run just a pre-K. So without that cohort, there was no need for us to have two because part of having an integrated pre-K is having the cohorts, the two cohorts. So if your cohorts aren't sort of equal, it's not really serving the purpose that it's designed to. Again, we'll always be looking at that. And because we have the pre-K revolving fund, it's very easy to add that back, and it's not a big budgetary issue. So that's how we've always sort of planned it, is that we have one in the budget that's solid for us, and then we have the pre-K revolving fund that we can fluctuate with if we need to add additional classes in the future.
Right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any questions? So thank you very much, Dawn. Next on our agenda is discussion items. Year 26 projected enrollment and improved 25-26 school improvement plan first read. Superintendent McCoy, would you like to?
Thank you. So Dawn was efficient, and she built in the projected enrollment into her conversation. So as you know, each year, we roll a new district improvement plan and a new school improvement plan for each of our four schools. It's all connected to our five-year strategic plan. You'll notice that as Dr. Reiman presents the draft of next year's improvement plan, it's nothing new. It's kind of continuing on with what we've been working on as a school and kind of what the next phase is, based on where we are and what the needs of our students are. As we come together this summer and as leadership, you know, during leadership team meetings and especially our retreat that we have for two full days in August, we will critique and refine all four school improvement plans and present to you in September the final school improvement plan for your review and approval at this point, at that point. But right now, we have a draft coming off of what we just finished up for this year. So Dr. Reiman?
Thank you. I sent you a copy from last week. And thanks to the incredible brains and hearts that are on the School Advisory Council, we made some adjustments. So what I'm handing you now is the updated one, and then we'll get it documented into the official packet since it's changed just a little bit. That's one of those.
Yeah, oh, yeah, sorry.
So, thank you. So as is our practice, we have three goals at Chickering. The first goal is actually parallel with Pine Hill, very similar. So we are looking at the second year of implementing our math curriculum, so Math 2.0. So we will continue with our coaching and support through that work and then look to expand our use of the curriculum. One of the amazing things about Reveal, one of the attractive pieces is the array of resources of providing each lesson. So there's support materials, there's project-based pieces, there's stretch curriculum. And so we want, that's the, this is the next year to really to dive into that level of the material. So that's where you see the project-based learning into the grade. Spoken Sequence is the, what do we teach when? So the curriculum comes set, obviously, you go 1 to 14 in the chapters. But we find that as we work through it, we sometimes move units around, shorten units. So we'll be looking to refine that now that we've lived it one year and continue the professional development that we set up in place. We have our full day after Thanksgiving, all of our half-days, and many of our staff meetings we use for professional development for all of our teachers, not just those who are teaching that curriculum, but all of the teachers in the building. So we're looking forward to part two. The second piece, the goal to, is to strengthen a data-driven collaboration and capacity building. This is a goal that we grabbed from Beth and Denny's plans to eventually get to the point of a K-12 vertical data view of the district. Right, as each building, we sort of come into our own little, our own little hive, if you will. And we really want to think about extending that. So first, we need to build our skills within the building in terms of looking at data. So that would be at data team meetings, which we have now, looking at grade level data meetings. So using those common planning times, every grade level has one meeting a week, and looking at the data from interventions and from beginning, middle, and end of the year assessments. And then using our professional learning communities to take that data and then design interventions to meet those needs. And then with that comes the use of OpenArbitex, which is a program I think Denny has told you about on several occasions, and really training our teachers how to use and mine the data. It's an incredible system, but it's a matter of just being able to really get into it. And with that, this one from my SAC, there were, it was, to continue those family engagement. So like that math morning and the presentation we did before open house last year, where we had parents kind of learn about different parts of the curriculum. So expand that not only in math, but other content areas. So parents get more of a feel for what's going on in the building. And the last one is our community collaboration. And this is the one where we want to look at in the building of looking at combining and thinking about how vertically we work through the building. So this is where we have teachers participate in learning walks. So we did this a month ago, I believe. So for example, a second grade teacher would visit a third grade classroom and then visited a first grade classroom. We had our fifth grade teacher visit a fourth grade and then go all the way back to kindergarten. Spend some time. And the idea is to give everyone a glimpse around the whole building, right? Jim and I have the best jobs in the world. And one of the reasons we do is because we get to see the whole building. And so we have a perspective that as a classroom teacher, you often don't have. So we want that vertical alignment and vertical awareness of what's happening around us. That will give us more opportunities for collaboration across, across grades this way and break them in. And then continuing the best practices, which you've heard about, the nine best practices, I'm sure. So this is what I'm sure we refined as we go through our summer work, as Beth said. But if you have any questions?
Thank you so much, Dr. Reiman. Any questions for that?
No, but I love that. Learning going from classroom to classroom. That's fantastic.
It was fun. It was really interesting. People really think, appreciate the plan.
I think expanding the opportunity our parents come to school and learning about the process of different math and other stuff, I think is really, really helpful for families. Thank you for having that opportunity.
It's, you know, in my mind, it's like one more evening event, like the last thing you want to do is go in the evening. Hopefully, we make it worthwhile for people to come in and offer them at different times during the day or evening for people to be able to attend.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So next on our agenda is action items.
Do we have a liaison?
So we do not have a liaison ready to appoint for next year. As you know, we, all three committees have been working As you know, we, all three committees have been working with a liaison to the Metco community, and that was something that was put in place, was voted in by the three school committees in the spring of 2024, with the goal of bringing additional voice and perspective to the table, because our students represent all three communities, Dover, Sherburne, and Boston. We appreciate our Metco liaisons this year who were able to attend both in person and online. And I think what I would like to propose for you to consider as a committee, instead of appointing someone tonight, instead, if perhaps we can have our three chairs work with our Metco family group over the summer to kind of refine that role. I think while it was great to have the person present, unfortunately, those liaisons can't vote because of town bylaws in Dover and Sherburne. However, I do think there's probably ways to get them more engaged and feel like they have more of a voice at the table. So before we go ahead and ask who's interested, I think it'd be in our best interest for you all to think about what that position looks like, so people know what they're signing up for. So if it's okay with you, I'd propose that you wait and vote in September.
No, that's great.
That seems logical.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's great. Thank you. So next on our agenda is consent items. We will review these items individually, and then we can vote together. First is year 26 non-resident student tuition. Dawn, would you please give us?
So this is your second year of actually having a non-resident tuition fund set up, and with that, we need to have school committees vote a tuition rate for our Pine Hill students who come over and go to Connections program. And we established sort of the process of doing that when many, many years ago, when we had some special education programs back at Pine Hill, and the school committees agreed that we would just charge the most recent per pupil cost based on what DUSI reports. And so the most current is fiscal year 24. With that, industry cost for our student at Chikering is of $22,653. So that would be the base for any student who's tuitioned in for Connections, but know that on top of that, we also add if they have an educational assistant assigned to them, if there's services above and beyond. So this is just the base, and it's augmented by other costs as needed. And again, you receive that tuition, and it sits in a non-resident tuition fund, which actually does come in handy at times. It's another sort of fund that we could use if, for some reason, during the middle of the school year, you needed to do something, and we have that funds available. It's very widespread that you can use it with. So we will have you guys vote that in the consensus judgment.
Great. And that's funny, that comes from the town of Sherburne. It's not additional tuition paid for by parents, just a reminder.
Yes, no, it's charged to Pine.
Thank you very much. Any questions about that? So the other item that we need to vote on is the minutes from our meeting in May, of May 13 of 2025. Any changes to that minutes? Okay. So with that said, may I have a motion to approve fiscal year 26 non-resident student tuition and Dover School Committee meeting minutes from May 13, 2025?
All right. Kate Cook, so moved.
Thank you, Kate. May I have a second?
Jessie, hold on a sec.
Thank you, Jessie. Any further discussion?
No, that's great.
All in favor? Motion moves anonymously.